We just say.
Okay. I'm all reading the order. And I need to get my information up in front of me. So I wasn't really quite ready to call when it ended on that. All right. So good evening and welcome to this meeting of the mayor and common council of Westminster. We are gathered here at Historic City Hall, originally an estate built in eighteen forty-two by Colonel John K. Longwell. The city acquired this building in nineteen thirty-nine and it has since been the venue where the mayor and council conduct the city's business. One interesting fact about Westminster is in two thousand and eleven, the U.S. Supreme Court ruled in Phelps versus Snyder, a case that began right here in Westminster. The father of Marine Lance Corporal Matthew Snyder, a Westminster native, sued after protesters from a rabidly deranged church in Kansas paid at his son's funeral. The court ultimately upheld the protesters' First Amendment rights, even though their actions were despicable, making this a nationally significant case rooted right here in our city's history. And for those of you that don't typically come to the meetings, I try to have one little tidbit of a history about Westminster for everything. If anybody has anything good, I mean, uh. Moving on, the city council typically convenes on the second and fourth Monday of each month. Please note that these meetings are open to the public here at City Hall and also streamed live on the city's YouTube page, as well as a community media center, channel and website. We extend their gratitude to your home media center of their participation in ensuring public access to these meetings. What the hell is that? Is there a ghost in here? As a courtesy to everyone, please take a little bit of the salad yourself. I don't have time to devices that how to interrupt this meeting. I was a little late on that. Thank you. I will begin the meeting with the pledge of allegiance followed by a moment for softness. I pledge allegiance. We have to save someone. To the power that flows with sands. A nation. Native folk, with liberty and injustice for all. Thank you very much. Copies of tonight's agenda and entire information packed if this that the council will be using are available online and on the city's website. Hard copies of the agenda are available here in the front of the room for those in attendance. Couple of presentations this evening. The first one will be the City of Westminster's Bird City Recognition. And I'd like to call on Ms. Pamela Kellit. Is that am I pronouncing that right? From Bird City, Maryland. So welcome and the floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Pamela Kellit and I am the Bird City, Maryland coordinator for the Maryland Bird Conservation Partnership. Bird City, Maryland was started in twenty nineteen as a way to encourage communities in Maryland to enhance the environment for birds and to educate the public about the contributions that birds make to a healthy environment. Bird City, Maryland is an initiative of the Maryland Bird Conservation Partnership and joined the National Bird City Network in twenty twenty-three, which is a joint venture of the American Bird Conservancy and the Environment for Americas. The network unites and connects independent bird city communities throughout the hemisphere who work directly with local communities like you to envision and complete bird friendly actions. Together we form a powerful collaborative force connecting people and helping birds across the hemisphere. So Bird City, Maryland is pleased to announce that Westminster has been recognized as Carroll County's first Bird City, Maryland community. Bird cities are required to complete at least ten action points, including committing to an annual celebration of World Migratory Bird Day. And World Migratory Bird Day has an annual conservation theme and is sponsored by the Environment for Americas, which is a Western hemispheric organization that connects diverse people to birds and nature. This year's theme is shared spaces creating bird friendly communities, sporting their beautiful merch right now. And each year they have a different conservation action theme and all the resources to celebrate are shared with the communities that are part of our Bird City Network. The application has four categories: habitat, threats to birds, education and engagement and sustainability. Each category has multiple possible actions that cities can complete. And the communities must complete at least three actions in the habitat category and one of all the others, as well as passing a resolution, which you have already done, committing to become a bird city. Highlights from Westminster's application, there are thirty-five year tree city recognition. There are a bee city. So now they've got tree city, bee city, bird city, very conservation minded. And encouragement of forest regeneration with a new habitat and a planting of six thousand native trees at Wakefield Valley Park, which also contains three point one miles of hiking trails. And they have many Carroll County Bird Club provides bird walks and ongoing bird conservation activities within the town and a city nature challenge sponsored by Westminster. And the Community Citizen Science and Bird Monitoring Program with the Carroll County Bird Club. So all of the achievements can now be found in Westminster's birdcity.org backslash Maryland backslash Westminster webpage. And I wanted to thank Andrea Gerhard, who's not here this evening, the senior planner for the city who helped out the allocation. And Maggie comes from the Carroll County Bird Club for their hard work and big congratulations. So I just wanted to present a certificate to the mayor.
Thank you.
That's beautiful. Let's be Carol the road sign.
Looking at those.
Um, which you can put wherever you would like. And then we ask each community to choose a signature bird to represent their community. And I'm going to let the mayor take it from there.
And I am pleased to announce that the bird for the city of Westminster is the Easter Bluebird.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Well, when people say that Westminster's going to birds. So next up is a mayor proclamation honoring our current chief, Tom Ledwell. So, Madam Mayor, take it away.
This is a mayor proclamation honoring the chief of police, Thomas Ledwell. Whereas Chief Ledwell's distinguished career in law enforcement spans more than three decades, including ten years of dedicated service with the City of Westminster Police Department. Throughout this time, his professional conduct, devotion to duty and commitment to public service, community engagement and civic leadership have been clearly demonstrated. And Chief Ledwell has served with distinction and honor as the chief of police for the City of Westminster from March first twenty nineteen to August thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. And Chief Ledwell has earned certification through the Maryland Police and Corrections Training Commission as both a general instructor and a defensive tactics instructor, thereby demonstrating his dedication to advancing professional standards in law enforcement. And Chief Ledwell modernized the Westminster Police Department by updating policies and procedures, implementing advanced technology systems, improving evidence management, streamlining hiring and promotional processes and enhancing officer training. And Chief Ledwell has fostered stronger coordination within the agency through weekly operations meetings, created new staffing and scheduling plans and secured multiple grants to support operations. And Chief Ledwell has strengthened the community trust through initiatives such as the Public Crime Dashboard, Domestic Violence Response Partnerships and the Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Program, while establishing specialized units and career development programs for sworn personnel. And Chief Ledwell provides a steady hand as it relates to the day to day business of the police department by ensuring a transparent, highly visible and actively engaged, measured and thoughtful approach when considering difficult issues. And now therefore I, Dr. Mona Becker, Mayor of the City of Westminster, join the common council, city staff members and the residents of the City of Westminster to commend and express profound gratitude to the chief of police for his exceptional leadership, innovative initiatives and unwavering commitment to the safety and wellbeing of the residents of Westminster during his tenure from August twenty fifteen to August twenty twenty-five. His dedication to community policing, operational excellence and organizational development has left a lasting positive impact on the Westminster Police Department and the entire community. Adopted this twenty-fifth day of August. Congratulations.
Tom's smiling on the outside. It's not happening about this. But it's not going to end right there. So I would like to call on the Carroll County Sheriff, Sheriff Dewise, to say a couple of things.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The common council chief, I didn't get you a proclamation, nor did I get you a plaque to hang on your wall. I'm just here to say thanks. And so Tom and I have been together for quite a long time here. The last eleven years I've been the sheriff. Tom's been with the police department as the assistant chief or or the chief. For the entire time, I've been I've been the sheriff and I. You know, being the chief or being the sheriff, you know, they always say bitch up. I mean, there's not very many places to complain. And so over the last ten years, Tom and I have sought counsel amongst each other. So you have to be able to pick up the phone and call someone to your left and just commiserate. And boy, have we done that over the last ten years. And I will tell you that being the chief of this police department or any police department or the sheriff of a county is not easy in law enforcement in twenty twenty-five, but it's really never been easy. Tom and I have been around for so many years, we've seen the evolution in law enforcement like you can never imagine. Besides technology, which is trends in law enforcement, but we've we've seen issues like Rodney King in the nineties, all the way fast forward in the late two thousands and two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty-one, George Floyd, COVID, everybody forgets that. While most peoples were hunkered down in our homes, you know, public service workers, law enforcement, corrections, fire, public service workers here were trying to get it done. And we collaborated an awful lot. And I will tell the I will tell the common council and anybody that's out there watching that my office, the state's attorney's office, Maryland State Police, Westminster Police Department meet every Monday morning. And we talk about crime and issues that are going on in this county. And those meetings and Tom Ledwell are the reason that crime in this community, specifically Westminster, is is not what it what people think it is really. It's it's safe. There's not a place in this community that I wouldn't walk at two o'clock in the morning. And that's by and large because Tom's a collaborative person. And the expectation should be that you always have someone that collaborates with every official in this county, but specifically with law enforcement. And Tom's been the absolute epitome of that. And so it has been an absolute pleasure to work with you. I'm a little disappointed that you're rolling out on me. I knew that you're going to take another role, but I can't tell you how how nice it's been to have somebody in this position to collaborate with me, to get things done on a daily basis, to keep this community safe and everything outside. I, you know, I often say that the folks that vote for this common council and the mayor, they're also my constituents because I'm a countywide elected official. So I take it seriously. And when Tom took office, that was one of the first things we did was make sure that we collaborated on everything we did to keep Westminster safe. And we knew that that would keep everything on the outside of Westminster safe as well. And so Tom's been very loyal to me. And there was a particular time in my tenure as sheriff where I needed Tom to come with me on something. And he had some blind trust that he did and his work got well for my office, for Westminster and for the safety and security of this of this city and this town. So Tom, it's a long, you're an old dog and it's been a long time. And I'm going to tell you something, you need you need rest. I'm somewhat, I'm modestly jealous. I hope I have a good job one day where I can I can retire and go off into the sunset. But you've you've done a wonderful job at a lot of different locations and it's been an honor and a privilege to work with you. I consider you a friend, a close ally, and I'm proud to be standing here bidding you farewell on your last council meeting. I know Friday is your last day, but congratulations.
Next, I'd like to ask our state attorney, Mr. Maker.
Hey, first of all, I knew this was a bird city, by the way, because they intently used my top. Sit over next to the courthouse. I knew that already.
We sent him over there.
I appreciate that. I want to tell you, Tom, on behalf of all the citizens of Carroll County, we certainly appreciate you for your years of public service, particularly the last ten here in Arica County. Thank you for all that you've done. I want to thank you on a on a personal note for the collaborative relationship that we've had in the three years that I've been on this job. Even when we disagreed about something, you know, we did so without being disagreeable. We're gonna we're gonna miss you tremendously. And I wish you all the best in your retirement. We have a little token of our appreciation from the state's attorney's office for you. It's suitable for priming. In fact, it's all right, friend.
Yeah, I'll kind of echo the theme of collaboration. I mean, you guys, Westminster Police has always been proactive, reached out to our office. When you guys notice a problem, somebody is going to be in court. You've always let us know. As a leader of your department, your officers have always been there. If we need them to do something, they've always been responsive. So I mean, you guys, we greatly appreciate your service. Appreciate this so much. Sure.
Thank you, gentlemen. Sarah, I believe you have something.
Yes. I Debbie Finch was unable to join us tonight, and so she asked me to read her comments for the chief. Chief Ledwell made numerous contributions to the fight against the opioid and overdose epidemic, and I want to highlight some of them. Even before my arrival at the Carroll County Health Department as opioid prevention coordinator in twenty twenty-one, the chief was concerned about the opioid crisis and a member of the opioid prevention coalition and working toward improving law enforcement engagement. He was actively involved in the initiation of the coalition's first responders appreciation dinner, an event where first responders were thanked for saving lives from overdose and hear from people in long-term recovery about why their work is so critical to our community. Chief Ledwell knew that compassion fatigue was an issue for officers who face overdoses on a regular basis. In twenty twenty, there was no event due to COVID nineteen, but in twenty twenty-one, we kept the mission going by changing our approach. More than thirty-five community leaders and volunteers gathered to deliver lunch to all fire and law enforcement departments in the county, each accompanied by a person in recovery who shared lunch and their story. One memorable year, a first responder who volunteers in Carroll County and works in Baltimore County told us that he had never in twenty years of service been thanked. In my work, I have not encountered any other community that has done this. First responders see people in crisis at their worst, but rarely get to engage with them to see the rewards of their efforts. At the same time, Westminster City Police were engaging in other law enforcement prevention programs developing around the nation. Officers were receiving training in CIT, Crisis Intervention Team, a program where specifically trained police officers, mental health professionals and community members work together to respond to crises involving people with mental health illnesses. The Westminster City Police were also receiving training in an innovative program called LEED, a pre-booking diversion program that allows law enforcement to connect eligible participants with intensive case management and divert them away from the criminal justice system. Both programs help lead people to treatment and recovery, and they are working. Chief Ledwell and I formed the Overdose Response Protocol Action Team in twenty twenty-one to be more proactive in the face of increasing overdoses. He is known for his willingness to work cooperatively with agencies and other members of the opioid prevention coalition. When Tim Weber, Community Liaison for the Office of State's Attorney, created a card listing resources for help for people struggling with addiction, Westminster City Police responded by distributing them at overdoses. The card included a nighttime phone line for help, closing a gap in services that Mobile Crisis and other local agencies could not fill. This was just one of several major initiatives of the Overdose Response Protocol Action Team. Others included, number one, development of a uniform overdose follow-up protocol to provide guidance and support for those who have overdosed. Other team brought our team brought together Carroll Hospital, the Health Department and Mobile Crisis to create the protocol so that anyone who overdoses and receives assistance will get appropriate follow-up, reducing the chance of future overdoses and increasing the chance of getting into treatment. Number two, creation of a quick response team, QRT, with two certified peer specialists and a case manager. QRTs are pre-arrest diversion deflection programs that involve interdisciplinary overdose follow-up and engagement with survivors to link individuals to treatment during the critical period following overdose. QRTs have applications for communities across the country challenged by the opioid epidemic and recurring overdoses and overdose deaths. Number three, development of an educational training for first responders aimed at reducing stigma. With Chief Ledwell's help, our Breaking Barriers seminar offered continuing education credit for police officers. Over fifty people, many of them from the Westminster Police Department, attended one of the seminar offerings. When Michael Robinson was hired to build the new Carroll County Fire and Emergency Medical Services Team, Chief Ledwell and I included him in our conversations and team. Eventually, the Narcan Leave Behind Program was initiated. And along with all the other prevention and harm reduction work, overdose deaths began to decrease significantly in Carroll County. Chief Ledwell has been a key part of what we have done here. Thank you.
This will be a top, I promise. Other than I can't say what council comments might.
Right, good. So. Thank you. Go ahead and take it. So this was created by a local artist, Stephanie Madsen. And we really give you a token of our appreciation as well.
Thank you very much.
As you retire.
You're welcome.
I'm going to say something?
Yeah, I'd like to thank please. So I mean, if you look around the room, how can you not be successful? Because I think we've got such a great team. Talked about the collaboration that's come up so many times at so many levels. Support of the mayor and council that we have, that's one of the big selling points that we get to talk about when we're recruiting and we have our hiring interviews and we can say it with sincerity. You know, there's there's a lot of conflict going on around us and we don't have that here. So that allows us to work on the real issues and be engaged with the community and doing what we ought to be doing. So can't do it unless you got a great team and, you know, that's been great. I really appreciate all the support and collaboration and I thank you all. So appreciate it.
Awesome. Awesome, but kind of sucks at the same time, you know. Okay, we'll move on to approval. Now we're going to get to business. Everybody wants to go now since I tagged it. Okay, well, we're going to approval minutes. We will now consider the approval of previous meeting minutes. We have minutes from one meeting of the mayor and council. These are the minutes of August eleventh, twenty twenty-five. May I have a motion to approve the minutes? May I have a second? I'll second. Thank you, Mr. Huff. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it and the minutes are approved. We will now move on to consent calendar. We have one item on the consent calendar this evening. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve, sir.
Mr. Dehoff, thank you. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Peckararo. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it and the consent calendar is approved. We will now move on to a report from the mayor. Madam Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things. On Saturday, August twenty-third, I welcomed about five hundred first-year McDaniel College students to Westminster. This this class is very diverse. This is the largest percentage ever of students attending Westminster campus from their sister campus in Budapest. And while in the past it has been much higher, this class has only fifteen percent of its incoming students from Carroll County. And so they're reaching out a little bit beyond Carroll County with their engagement. It was a beautiful morning. I was joined by council members Anne Gilbert and Kevin Dehoff from the library lawn for comments and an official welcome before the students explored downtown. In my opinion, I think it was one of the most successful McDaniel welcome events to date. I was in town from about ten AM till eleven thirty, and when I left, there were still students shopping in our retail stores, picking up lunch from various spots in town. And as I greeted students throughout the morning and from the afternoon, it was clear they were excited to start the semester as a greeting terror. Later that day, myself, along with council member Dehoff and Commissioner Tom Gordon, attended Find Your Purposes Back to School Drive hosted by Billy Live at the Westminster City Park. This event provides school supplies from notebooks and backpacks to pencils and markers for students entering school this year. There were also a variety of nonprofit organizations on hand and Collision Course was serving up food at the event. Yesterday on Sunday, August twenty-fourth, one of my favorite things happens at six PM. The week before Labor Day, I attended, along with council members Dan Hoff, Anne Gilbert and Kevin Dehoff, the End of Summer Concert by the Westminster Municipal Band. Held in Historic Belgrove Square, this concert is a longstanding tradition tradition in the Westminster community. As always, the concert was fantastic with plenty of attendees and we enjoyed an evening of band music, including some pop tunes and patriotic marches. At the event, I mentioned how lucky of a community we are to have a municipal band that represents and promotes Westminster, not only in the state of Maryland, but throughout the Midland region. And we will see the band next during Fall Fest. The very last thing, I would just like to say one or two more things for the chief, as I'm sure everyone elsewhere will a little bit later in the meeting. I just want to voice my appreciation for the outstanding work by the chief over the last testing. To me, you are the epitome of a police officer. Everywhere in and outside the community, I have heard positive comments about how the officers of the Westminster Police Department comport themselves while serving the community. You have built a department of respect and discipline, honor and dedication, a department that sees pride, that sees and prides themselves as part of the community and strives to uphold the values that you have instilled in each and every officer that has come through the department. I wish you the best in your retirement and I thank you heartily for your years in service to the City of Westminster and as chief of the Westminster Police Department. It has been an absolute honor on my behalf to have you as chief of the Westminster Police Department during my first term as mayor. And you will be missed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And we will stick with you because we're having a move to reports on committees and yours is first up, Arts Council.
Yep. So just a short report from the Arts Council. The Arts Council welcomed three new board members this past month. Daniel DeHollander, Corinne Corpus and Jackie Reeve have all joined the board. They are active members of the community. And I have no doubt they will bring new energy, ideas and support to the Parks Center. The Arts Center flyer has a new look. If you've got yours in the mail, I imagine we'll get one here sometime soon at a council meeting. It has a new sleek, modern look to it, which really helps the events to stand out. I just want to mention two things coming up. On Friday, September fifth, at seven thirty PM, there is a premiere of a movie called Growing into Greatness. It is a documentary about Maryland champion trees. The film was produced by Professor Robert LeMieux at McDaniel College and tells the story of the champion trees that are found in Maryland. It will be released on Maryland Public Television in twenty twenty-six. So this is your chance to see that a little bit earlier. And also on the horizon is the member show. The registration for deadline is September first. And the show will be on exhibit from September twenty-third until November eighth. And you can expect to see some amazing artwork during that time. And that is my report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We'll move on to economic. Thank you, Madam Mayor. We'll move on to Economic and Community Development. Mr. Huff.
Nothing to report to see there.
Thank you, sir. Uh, when we move on to Finance Committee, Mr. Peccarero.
I have nothing, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Uh, next up will be Personnel Committee, Skilber.
I have nothing to report.
Okay, we'll go on to Public Safety. I do have a short report. On August eighteenth, the Westminster Police Department patrol officers located and stopped a vehicle at six twenty-five Balla Boulevard that had been stolen in Howard County. The vehicle was operated and occupied by underage juveniles, seems to be quite the trend, who were subsequently charged and, uh, for various offenses. With the assistance of, and, and number two, with the assistance of the Public Works Department, the Westminster Police Department Criminal Investigation Bureau officers received a much, offices received a much-needed refresh and which included a fresh coat of paint, replacing the old carpet with luxury vinyl flooring and updating the detectives' desks and chairs, and I can assure you that that saved the taxpayers a good bit of money by doing a lot of that work in-house. So, good job there. That is the end of my report.
Luxury and vinyl flooring, you're putting this.
I, I, I meant to take that out like, what I. It sounds so funny. All right, but we'll move on to the Public Works Committee. Mr. Peccarero.
Thank you, Mr. President. I thought to, I couldn't tell.
No, I, I.
Uh, I should have mentioned earlier, um, Finance Committee, we actually did meet last week and did have um, a really good conversation with city staff, not, um, some of the city, you know, banking, financial brass. You know, so that really, I share this with everybody. Um, I have nothing for the Public Works Committee that we have on that.
Thank you, Mr. Peccarero. Parks and Recreation, Mr. Skilber.
I have a few items, um, for the, uh, Recreation and Parks Report. Walk with a naturalist upcoming sunset. A Siri turned on.
She's listening.
She's listening all over the place tonight. Um, Walk with a Naturalist Upcoming Sunset Hike. We, um, invite the community to join us for the next Walk with Naturalists at Wakefield Valley Park located at one thousand Bendy, Bendy Farm Road. The upcoming sunset hike is scheduled for Sunday, September eighth, from six to seven. The guided experience will explore the park's evolving beauty as the seasons change and will offer fascinating insights into the area's history, ecology, and native wildlife. The hike will begin in front of Durbin House. Participants are encouraged to wear comfortable footwear, so no stilettos. Um, dress appropriately for the weather and bring a sense of curiosity. While registration is not required, it is helpful for planning purposes if attendees let us know which dates they plan to, to join us. Um, parade applications are also open. Applications are now being accepted for participation in two of the Westminster signature parades, Fall Fest and Miracle on Main. Fall Fest Parade will be September twenty-fifth, and Miracle on Main is November twenty-ninth. Uh, we encourage all the local organizations and groups and businesses to help us celebrate the community spirits, um, and our tradition of market launching down Main Street. That is all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Skilber. The mayor has a question for you.
The Walk with, uh, Naturalists, the, the eighth is a Monday? So is it Sunday, September seventh?
Ms. Gruber, can you help clarify that?
I think I might have missed that, but I believe it is Monday, the eighth.
Monday.
We'll go back to Monday, September eighth, okay.
Thank you.
From six to seven.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, we'll move on to the Technology Committee. Mr. Dayhoff, your report, sir. Thank you very much. And Intergovernmental, Mr. Huff.
I have, uh, nothing to report this evening.
Okay, we'll move on now to council comments and discussion. Mr. Peccarero.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I do want to just take an opportunity briefly to thank Chief Ledwell for his years of service, you know, it's. Want to go back to, and you'll remember this well, you know, when, uh, when we were replacing former chief and, I mean, you were about to launch a big search, and you, Mr. President, came to, came to us, you said, before we go out and talk to all these other people, you guys really need to sit down and hear what Tom Ledwell has to say. And so we, we all got together, and, you know, Chief Ledwell, then Assistant Chief Ledwell, made an amazing presentation to us where, you know, he discussed, you know, in detail statistics and facts about how Westminster, about, about what was going on in Westminster and crime in Westminster, lack of crime in Westminster, and demographics of the city, and how the city was being policed, and how he would change how the city was being policed, and, you know, really shared with us, you know, a lot of things we didn't know about, the ideas around community policing. And, and we were just blown away. He left that, he left that conversation, and we all just kind of looked at each other and said, there's, there's, there's no reason to go any further, you know, the right guy was sitting right in front of us. And so we made that choice, um, um, we made absolutely the right choice, probably did it. Uh, and he's just done a terrific job. Chief, thank you so much for all you did for the city. You fulfilled every promise that we thought you had that night. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Peccarero. Mr. Dayhoff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to echo everyone's remarks. I've really enjoyed working with you. I wish you the best in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Ms. Skilber.
Well, I will, I will, uh, reiterate almost everything everybody said tonight, but I kind of prepared something, so I at least am saying what I prepared, even though it's probably a repeat. Um, I just want to take a moment to thank Chief Ledwell for the years you've spent here in Westminster. Not only have you been a department head, but the voice of reason, a team player, a colleague, and the backbone behind so many efforts to not only keep our community safe, but change the perception of policing in our community. You have brought innovative initiatives, initiatives to Westminster City Police Department, along with harm reduction strategies, strategies to our community. Your collaboration with the community and its partners is immeasurable. Your leadership strengthened our police force, but also built trust and respect with our community and our youth. As you move on to another new chapter in your life, you leave behind huge police shoes to fill. So I want to say thank you for your years of service here in Westminster and being an integral part of making it a safer place, of making Westminster a safer place to live, work, and play. And I wish you and your family nothing but happiness in the future, and enjoy your retirement.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Or not so retirement, maybe, I don't know. Um, along with that, with council comments, um, I wanted to also welcome McDaniel students to Westminster and to our county and hope they have a great prosperous year. And I also wanted to, um, comment on the Westminster Municipal Band's performance. Again, it was a beautiful evening. I think one of the prettiest temperature. Uh, the, the temperature last night was just amazing. We weren't sweating. It was just a nice breeze in the air and listening to the music. It was just so pleasant. Um, and reiterate Mayor Becker, um, statement that we are blessed to have such a great longstanding active band in our city, as a matter of fact, since eighteen ninety-three. So it has been a very longstanding band. Um, and it is wonderful to hear them every couple of times a year, particularly outside. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Skilber. Mr. Huff.
Um, Chief, it has been a, a pleasure. I've only been on council for a little over four years now. My first two years, I was on the Public Safety Committee. Um, you have been an incredible example of what a good chief is. Um, so I really appreciate that, and I wish you the best of luck in retirement, and I hope you enjoy your retirement. And, uh, very much appreciate your service to this community. And you've done an amazing job.
Appreciate that.
Um, the other thing I wanted to, to just take a moment to, to mention is I just want to compliment our, uh, Planning and Zoning staff as well as, uh, the commission itself. We had a controversial, uh, project come up on our agenda on Thursday night. It was a three and a half hour long meeting. Um, and I just was really impressed by, uh, some of our members and the consideration that they gave to the topic and the different issues involved. Um, I thought that anyone who was objectively watching the hearing, while some people might not be happy with the unresolved, I think anybody that was objectively watching, uh, would consider the issues involved well-considered. Um, so I really appreciate, uh, you know, staff's effort, and I really, uh, commend and compliment, um, our, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission. Really, uh, considering those, um, issues involved. And also our chair, um, Tom Baird was a great appointment and is doing a great job in that role on, on the commission. Um, that's it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Huff. Um, I will just, on that, with the labor, the point done, you've got a hell of a lot. And we, we're all really grateful, this public safety chair, for your entire tenure. I couldn't be more grateful for the work you've done. So thank you. We're gonna miss you as our chief. And then at least in the interim, temporarily, we're gonna be in very capable hands of our. We don't have a ton of meat and potatoes this evening because we really wanted to make sure this was a lot about Tom and his retirement, so we don't have any bids and ordinances and things of that nature. Mr. Ramsey, you probably just need to have some of this meeting. But I'm sure you wanted to at least say goodbye to our chief. Um, is there any unfinished business that I'm not aware of that we need to address? Is there any new business that I'm not aware of? Hearing none, we'll move on to departmental reports.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to remind everyone that Monday is Labor Day, so city offices will be closed. Um, I want to take, take an opportunity to thank all of our staff, um, that sometimes don't get thanked, and, and we are so grateful for all of your hard work. I've worked in lots of different places, but this, this staff that we have is incredibly skilled, dedicated, and, uh, is very passionate about the community and the work that they do. So thank you to you all. Um, we're gonna start tonight with, as we always do, Ms. Gruber and the Recreation and Parks Department.
Good evening. Um, first, Tom, I would just like to express how, um, grateful I am to have worked alongside you all of these years. Um, everything that we have done in the Recreation and Parks Department has only been better and, um, more complimented because of you at the helm of the police department. And so, um, when you talk about working alongside a team of people that help make you successful, you do every day, um, you're certainly at the top of my list. So, thank you very much, um, for being such a great police, a leader to Westminster, and, um, a coworker of mine who I thoroughly enjoy working alongside. So, I will miss you greatly.
Thank you.
In other notes, um, we'll move on to our favorite topic, pickleball. Uh, we're pleased to report that several updates, uh, to our local pickleball facilities are happening. At the City Park Pickleball Courts, a new divider fence has been installed to replace the previous one, um, which suffered repeated vandalism. The new fence features a more durable construction, including a heavier top gauge, um, top rail, and a newly added bottom rail, and hopefully both of these enhancements will add stability, significantly improving the fence's sturdiness to help prevent future damage. Um, in addition to that, over the weekend, our J C Park Pickleball Courts received fresh coats of paint thanks to some very dedicated, um, pickleball players and are also wonderful volunteers for us at the city of Westminster. Um, this update will enhance both the aesthetics and the functionality of these courts. Uh, we just have one more thing to finish over there, which we need to put the white lines around the freshly painted, um, court surface. So, in addition to improvements, uh, Westminster Family Fitness Center is also getting ready to undergo some additional improvements. Beginning on Monday, September eighth, we are getting new windows installed on the third floor of the facility. Um, this is a huge improvement for us as our current windows, um, actually have created some water intrusion issues for us over the years. And so we are very excited to getting this done right before winter and the height of hurricane season. So, just to let you know, uh, staff has thoughtfully adjusted the group fitness, uh, schedule for the month of September to minimize the disruptions that this will cause, um, because some of the rooms and studios will need to be taken offline during the renovation. Um, but please know we do remain committed to, uh, keeping the group fitness schedule robust and well-rounded during this time where we will be taking, uh, facilities offline. And that concludes my report, unless there are questions.
Are there questions for the Recreation and Parks Department? Hearing none, we will move on to the Public Works Department. Public Works has been very busy this summer, setting up and cleaning up for National Night Out, repairing broken window at the armory, uh, assisting the police department with some repairs and installation, and of course, working on our annual paving. And they're just about to start getting ready for Fall Fest as well. Are there any other questions for the Public Works Department? Hearing none, we will move on to the Human Resources Department.
Good evening. Um, I will echo what everyone else has been saying. I'm the newest member of the department that's here at the city of Westminster, and I will say that Chief Ledwell has been the most welcoming, most collaborative chief or leader um, that I have encountered, being new to working with municipalities and dealing with the police department. It has been a great learning experience. Um, and he has been, you have been not seeking about me, seeking to you. You have been an awesome uh, leader and colleague, and I wish you the best of luck in your next endeavor. Thank you so much. Um, as it relates to the Human Resources Department, we are actively working, as you all have been celebrating, uh, parking wrecks for all of the activities, um, that they have been doing. We are working on transitioning out as parking wrecks closes uh, the pool and other things. We are working diligently on transitioning those seasonal staff out, as well as filling other vacancies that we have available um, in the city, and I would encourage you and the public, if you know, well-qualified and people who love the city of Westminster and want to work here, to visit our website and to apply to those positions. Thank you so much. If there's any question.
And any questions for the Human Resources Department?
So, it's not a question, but a quick comment. You know, Ms. Brown, I'm so glad you said that about transitioning those folks out. We tend to lose sight some of, of some of the things you guys have to do in Human Resources. We always kind of think of you have this real kind of singular silo just hiring people, but there's a lot more to it, the benefits and all the other stuff, but we, we forget about that. So, glad you mentioned that. Thanks for all the work you guys do.
Thank you.
Really, really been just, you've been awesome since you've been here. I think we're all very grateful, so.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. President. All right, we will move on to the IT Department. Mr. Moore.
Yes, it's us. Uh, once again, just say thank you for your service. Thank you for your, uh, collaboration. This is the fourth agent I've ever done. By far, I've never had a relationship with a place where like my team has with you guys, so, um, it, it helps our, it helps us, it helps you guys. Um, the willingness for my guys to jump in when there's a problem, you don't get that everywhere because sometimes it's far more difficult, so, um, but I can honestly say it's been a pleasure here, so. Um, as far as my team goes, we are actively working on our annual user audit, going through all the users and permissions and things like that. And on the G I S side of things, I met with the county this morning to create a relationship with their G I S director and start bridging that gap and doing more collaborative work with them. So, that's my report, unless you have any questions.
Are there any questions for the IT Department? Hearing none, we will move on to the Housing Department. Mr. Brown.
Good evening. I, I don't have anything to report on this evening. But I, like everybody else, I want to take this opportunity to to thank the chief for his service and, and for the, and I hope I'm not overusing the word, the collaborations that we have enjoyed since my tenure here. And we have frequently engaged on a number of issues, some with very positive outcomes. I said the majority of them, and some may not. But it's always been a, a, a cooperative atmosphere with the intent of getting the best outcome for our citizens. So, thank you, and I wish you the very best in your retirement. Thank you.
Are there any questions for the Housing Director? Good evening. We'll move on to the Planning Department. Mr. Depot.
Thank you. I'll repeat what everybody's saying. Planning for a very long time. I've been doing this for thirty-some years. And I can absolutely say I've never had a relationship and collaboration with the police department as we do here. It is special, and I want to thank you for that, and congratulations and good luck. Um, as for planning, uh, on August twenty-first, the Planning Zone Commission approved Site Development Plan S twenty-two thirty-four. This is to construct a two-story, four-unit multifamily dwelling at two eighty-eight East Main Street. And they approved Site Development Plan S twenty-three-one. This is to construct a four thou, a five thousand four hundred ninety-three square foot Chick-fil-A restaurant located in the southeast quadrant of Baltimore Boulevard, Route one forty, and Old Baltimore Road. And, and with the Chick-fil-A, we'll also be getting Market Street extended. Um, that will provide, uh, significant improvements on traffic circulation in the area. And that completes my report. I'm available for any questions.
Are there any questions for the Planning Department? Hearing none, we will.
Uh, what, Ms. Moore, something I do want to just add, add on is. Uh, what, Ms. Moore, something I do want to just add, add on is the, the Market Street being built is a really important thing, I think, for the overall community. Um, you know, right now that traffic circle just kind of dead ends. Um, it doesn't go through to one forty. And now that it will, I think that'll really help some of the traffic flow that we use, uh, from Stone Gate and Old Westminster, and just be much more conducive. And, and though there are members of, of the tree street community that, um, you know, think it's not a good thing, you know, time will tell, but I kind of think that based upon the evidence that we heard that evening, I think it will improve some of the cut-through issues that are currently taking place, uh, related to Baltimore. So I, I, I think the, the fact that Market Street is going through is a really good thing in the long run for the community. So, that's it.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll move on to the Finance Department. Ms. Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Tim Hall. Good evening. I do not have a report from the Finance Department, but I do have to say thank you to Chief. Um, Chief, I don't think since I've been here, I've called you Tom once. So when you take over, you'll be, you know, moved up to chief now, as far as the title goes. I just really want to thank you. Everyone has talked about your collaboration. I echo that. But another word that I have is your thoughtfulness when you approach everything. Um, you're a great partner, a great think partner. And, um, I, I always know when I pick up the money for you, we're gonna get it done. A little known fact about Chief that many of you, well, Miss him also knows, and maybe, um, Chris Price knows, but, um, Chief is a, um, Excel geek like I am, so I always enjoy working with him. I know when I give him a new cellphone and he does some things, it probably will make it better. When you move on to your second phase of career, um, and you're, you're done vacationing, enjoying time, if you ever need a job in finance, call me. And, um, with all seriousness, and all seriousness, I appreciate working with you. I'm really gonna miss you. All the best.
Are there any questions for the Finance Department? All right, so we will move on to the Police Department. Um, I want to make sure that I've introduced Major Price, who I have appointed as the acting chief once, uh, Chief Ledwell retires.
Thank you, ma'am.
So, Major Price, thank you for joining us tonight, and thank you for stepping up and to serve as acting chief. All right, I have a few words that I'd like to say, uh, the chief. Round that. In a meeting of the Opioid Prevention Coalition in May twenty-twenty-one, Chief Ledwell said, "I believe we can be more proactive in dealing with the increasing overdose numbers." As a result, the Overdose Response Protocol Action Team was formed, which changed the course of the opioid epidemic in Carroll County. Chief Ledwell's leadership has fostered collaboration and problem-solving across agencies with our governmental, public health, human services, and law enforcement partners in order to effectively provide the correct service to those in need. Chief Ledwell will not only be remembered for his dedication and passion in law enforcement, but for, for his kind and gentle demeanor, his humor and his wit, his ability to remain calm under pressure, and his willingness to lead, teach, mentor, envision, and collaborate. Chief Ledwell conducts himself with integrity, fairness, and respect for the diverse needs and perspective of the community, of the department, and of the city staff. Chief Ledwell, for the past ten years, you have led with a rare combination of strength and humility. You've been data-driven, solutions-oriented, and relentlessly focused on the details that matter. But what set you apart wasn't just your discipline or your vision, it was your character. Your superpower has always been your calm. In a profession that so often tests patience and resolve, you never let frustration cloud your judgment. You met every challenge with composure and every person, no matter the circumstance, with dignity and respect. You saw humility first, always. You saw humanity first, always. You've taught us that leadership isn't about power, it's about accountability, about listening, about believing that there's always a better way forward, and then working together to find it. Thank you for setting that standard. Thank you for your integrity, your wisdom, and your unwavering commitment to this community. You will be deeply missed. It has been my absolute honor to serve with and alongside you. On behalf of the entire city staff, we wish you a restful, healthy, and happy retirement.
Thank you so much. Very good.
Chief, bless you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I feel pretty good right now. I, I overlooked thanking my wife, who's here before any speaking, which was a big fuh-pah. But, um, obviously, I'm in year thirty-four of, um, law enforcement, uh, in Maryland, and I couldn't have done it without you and that support. Also with our child, A.J., who had to work tonight, but, um, has been a great support for me. So I'm very lucky to be able to go home to that, because sometimes you're at the height of stress, and that's so important. So thank you so much. Um, as far as Police Department goes, I've got a couple of things. Um, one, um, the State's Attorney's Office put out a, uh, press release this morning that had to do with a robbery, a strong-arm robbery, kind of penny more right on Main Street. And I wanted to, uh, highlight the work that our, uh, folks did, our officers and our detectives. The individual was masked, but they were able to follow the video evidence and find a tattoo on his hand that they were recognized. Um, and they were able to, uh, positively identify him and, um, he just pled guilty to the, uh, the robbery. He was on probation for a second-degree assault. So, um, he's gonna have to get some incarceration for that, and hopefully will, um, come out and not have the same violent tendencies, but I wanted to highlight that. So it's a good job on our officers and detectives' part. Uh, the second thing is that, um, we have hired a gentleman who we will swear in tomorrow. His name is Jason Jones. Um, he's going to fill the role of, uh, patrol commander. Captain Peter, who is our current patrol commander, will move into where, uh, Jeffrey Schuster retired, so he'll be our C I B commander. Um, I think you're gonna enjoy, uh, Captain Jones. He is a ball of energy. Um, he brings unbelievable, uh, resume. Um, he's serving as an acting, uh, major, uh, precinct commander with the Portland, Oregon Police Bureau, where he oversees, um, one hundred fifty sworn and a number of other professional staff. Uh, he's been in law enforcement with them for over twenty-six years in patrol investigations, training in various leadership roles. He brings a strong background in crisis response, community engagement, and data-informed policing strategies. He's been a critical incident commander with experiencing, experienced managing complex swap and crisis negotiation activations. He's a graduate of the FBI National Academy. He holds a PhD in leadership and is completing a second master's degree in political science this fall. He's developed and taught more than thirty college course, college-level courses in criminal justice, and has supported national and international public safety and leadership initiatives. So we're really excited to bring him to Westminster. He's very excited to start here tomorrow, and I think he'll be a huge addition. It will have like a four-day overlap. Um, I'd also like to say that I have the utmost confidence in Deputy Chief Price taking the helm. Um, he's done an exceptional job. Uh, we were having some challenging times when he came on board, and he was very helpful, a very, uh, good support system for me, and has been a great member of the team. So I have the utmost confidence in him. That's it. Once, are there any questions?
Are there any questions for the chief? With that, Mr. President, include the departmental reports.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ledwell, thank you, so on behalf of the mayor and council for allowing Tom to have a second career with us, because I'm sure when he left Frederick, you were thinking, maybe you'd get him all to yourself. So you let him have this for ten years. So thank you very much. Okay, the final item on our agenda is citizens' comments, during which we invite the public to address the mayor and council on any issues related to tonight's agenda or other city matters. For those not attending this public meeting, we welcome your comments via email at comments@westminstermb.gov. All emailed comments will be shared with the mayor and council. Please include your address and phone number with your comments. We will now invite comments from those present this evening. This is an opportunity for the public to share their thoughts with the mayor and council. Our role at this point is to listen to your comments and respond appropriately after consulting with staff and each other. Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to be heard? And if so, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Tina Miller, um, executive director of the nonprofit Action for Kindness and city resident at forty-six Bond Street. Um, my husband and I, Eric Miller, would like to address two things to the mayor and city council and Chief Ledwell. You know, uh, we have fun stories being city residents. Of the chief of police of our awesome city. Having the chief of police of our awesome city riding around on his bicycle and coming to talk to us, uh, it, it is just, we have some really good memories of-
I'm stopping by my shed one day and just, it just, just being two guys talking about woodworking was, was really, really special.
And then also talking at different, uh, civic activities, uh, National Night Out. And, and we really appreciate everything that you've done and, and with, with the, with the officers under you, uh, they're just all wonderful. It's, it's been wonderful to interact with them and feel safe in the city because of that. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
And then secondly, um, as the executive director of the nonprofit Action for Kindness, I'd like to thank the City of Westminster for their sponsorship of our Kindness Stroll. It's our signature fundraiser, and I'm grateful, um, that, uh, uh, city planning has helped us to turn Westminster into an art gallery with, uh, the kind of signs in the merch windows. So I just wanted to-
Hanging the flags.
And hanging the flags, yes, for, for the city staff, for hanging the flags as well. We're really grateful, um, that you've allowed us to, uh, engage in the community and, and, and been such a wonderful, um, uh, partner in putting that together. So-
And have you staff for, um,
Yes.
For the kickoff celebration.
So, those are our comments, and thank you. Thank you.
Well, we don't typically engage folks who comment. That's kind of the deal that we have. We, we let people talk to us, we don't talk to them. That's standard. Um, but I think I speak for everybody when we, when I say how proudly proud we are of the work you guys have done. You put us on the map in a lot of ways. I've gone to other communities outside of the state, around the country, and I've seen signs. Um, it's not at all uncommon to see them throughout Maryland. Um, and it's just super cool. And I know there are some in other countries because we, my wife and I put some up on there. So you're, you're worldwide global, and you can help make Westminster a better place. So thank you for that. Um, anybody else want to say anything before I move on to the rest of the comments, even though I know I'm really pretty? Okay. All right. So is there anyone else who would like to be heard? Yes, sir, please. Name and address, please.
Richard Krebs, uh, eight Bridge Road. Just wanted to say thanks. Uh, my thanks is of a much smaller nature, but an important one. Uh, I know throughout the city, uh, there's been a campaign over many years now to make sidewalks more accessible to people of all ages and all abilities. Uh, you finally hit Westmoreland, which is right down the hill from me. Uh, you have a very good crew of people doing that job, and, uh, it makes it easier for, uh, people of my age, uh, as well as, uh, people with, uh, carts and wagons and strollers, uh, to get up and down sidewalks without navigating a curb. So, uh, thank you for that job. It's being well done. Uh, keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else who needs to be heard this evening? Well, that concludes our agenda for the evening, and our next regular meeting will be Monday, oh, well, that is tonight. So it's gonna be our next one in September. What's the date? Anybody?
September eighth.
September eighth. September eighth. Thank you very much. And with that, and without objection, we are adjourned.